Good evening and welcome. I'm Natasha Spada, Chair of the Needham Planning Board, and I'm calling the April fifteenth, twenty twenty five Planning Board Meeting to Order. This meeting of the Planning Board is being conducted in a hybrid manner, consistent with current state regulations and is being recorded. As a reminder, this meeting is being broadcast on the Town's YouTube channel and also via Zoom and by the Needham Channel, and is being recorded for publication, later viewing, and administrative purposes. All materials for this meeting are available on the Town's website, needhamma.gov. So we have a new member with us tonight, Eric Greenberg, so welcome.
Welcome.
Welcome and congratulations.
So Board Member Adam Block.
Present.
Artie Crocker.
Here.
Eric Greenberg.
Present.
Justin McCollum.
Present.
And I, Natasha Spada, present. Zach Lee Newman and Alex Clear here with us today. So we have seven items on our agenda today. And I'm just going to go through them very quickly. The first item is the Heather Lane definitive subdivision, and that's regarding a bond. The second one is an update for the Large House Review Meeting. We have some members here today. The third one is the zoning article assignments for the annual and special town meetings and further board discussion on warrant articles. The meeting minutes for March eighteenth is the next item. Summer schedule, report from the Planning Board and Board Members, and then the correspondence, which we only have one, and that's from Katie King from April eleventh, twenty twenty five. So with that, the Heather Lane definitive subdivision is Heather Lane definitive subdivision, residential compound, special permit bond reduction.
Okay, so this is two pieces. The first part is the first section of Heather Lane, which was the area that was developed as a residential subdivision, not the residential compound. So they're asking to have their street maintenance bond released at this time. We're currently holding fifteen thousand dollars. We have a recommendation from DPW to authorize that release. I do want to call out, although I don't think it's the developer's obligation at this time. The town had put a conservation restriction easement on the area along the floodplain. It was signed off by the Conservation Commission. In order to convert that into a perpetual restriction, it requires sign off by the state. And I'm not sure, Chris Keefe has been managing that, what the status of that is, but it's important that that be done. But I don't think that's linked to the bond, but the town, I think the town council is proceeding to close that out, to convert that.
Those are two separate things.
I think they're two separate issues. We already have the conservation restriction easement signed by the developer granting it to the town. We have the documents signed by the developer that went to the state. I think it's a question of closing it out with the state to convert it from a restriction that has a time limit to a restriction that's perpetual in nature. But that shouldn't, I don't think, tie up the bond. I just wanted to call it to your attention.
But the developer already said, they sent their requirement to the state.
The documents have already gone to the state, and the easement has been signed by the commission and it's been signed by the developer.
So it's the town that's holding that right now?
It's the state that's actually cosigns that. The state cosigns the restriction and then it's re-recorded, and that's converts it to a perpetual restriction. So the first one, I guess, is the, is the traditional subdivision piece of it, and that's a reduction of fifteen thousand dollars, which is the amount we hold. And the other is for the extension, which was a residential compound at the end of Heather Lane, and we're currently holding eighty-five hundred dollars for that. And again, DPW is recommending, they've done the inspections out there, and they're recommending that release.
So.
Chair?
Yes, Adam?
Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt, Lee. I was just about to make some motions.
Thank you.
I think she's finished, so I'm done.
Sorry, Lee, I thought you were done there. Madam Chair, I move the release of eighty-five hundred dollars with respect to the surety currently being held for street maintenance related to this Heather Lane extension definitive subdivision. And Lee, can I do this in one motion for both projects? Or does it have to be separate motions?
I would do them separately.
Okay, that's my motion, Madam Chair.
I second that.
So motion by Adam, second by Justin. Any discussion? Okay, so let's vote. So all in favor say aye. Oh, because of, okay, Adam Block?
Sorry, folks, aye.
Okay, Justin?
Aye.
And I, the chair, so we're unanimous. So that's the first part. And then the second part is a motion for the.
To release, I am going to do it.
So, Madam Chair, I move the release of fifteen thousand dollars related to the surety with respect to street maintenance for the Heather Lane definitive subdivision.
Second.
So Adam made the motion and seconded by Justin. Any questions? So we'll vote again. Adam?
Aye.
Justin?
Aye.
And I, the chair, so we're unanimous. So I think that's all we need, Lee, right?
That's it.
Okay, so thank you. Item number one, okay, so item number two today is the update from the Large House Review Committee. So if you'd like to come up and introduce yourselves. And do you want us to put up the information that you sent on? Just so you guys know, Jean's on her way. She might take me sad, so she'll be here in a couple minutes. Well, thank you for coming. While she puts it up, maybe introduce yourselves.
I'm Mo Handel, I'm co-chair of the Large House Study Committee aligned with Artie Crocker.
All the way over.
Oscar Wertz.
Bill Paulson.
And Bill Paulson, you're kind of the realtor aspect of it. Paul, you're the developer builder aspect of it, and Oscar's the architect. And Mo, you're a citizen at large.
Okay, great.
Jean McNight is on her way.
And Jean is the, was appointed by the planning board.
Just kidding, sorry.
Perfect timing.
I do not think we have any members. There are other members, I don't think anybody else is remote, I believe, right? There are no committee members who are remote, so you will be the speakers.
So I'm going to give a brief overview, and then here is, we'll give more detailed information, and there'll be a PowerPoint that's already up to describe what we're talking about. The first thing to understand is the study we're undertaking is as a result of the charge from the Planning Board to this committee, and our commitment is to a very published process. And to that end, our first step is to develop information that we can share. And that information will be shared as we develop it, and then there will be public workshops. Starting first in June, pause over the summer because we want to make sure people who have an interest in this issue are available. And we'll pick up again in the fall. We are also meeting with and developing information from four similar communities, similar in some sense, different than others, so that we can share that information with the board and the public to determine what others have done and what may or may not be applicable to Needham, and then on how the people who participated in that meeting inform us about what their concerns are. So the communities we're studying are Concord, Wellesley, with whom we've already met. We met with the Chair of that Planning Board, and he came and spoke to the old committee to describe Wellesley's process. We're going to do the same thing with Newton and Lexington, whether or not we actually have people come from those communities. We will at least develop a lot of information about how they approach the issue of large houses. They will also be, and we're anticipating consultants involved, developing the financial implications of regulations that affect the size of houses on lots, and the cost of those regulations also to the town because the enforcement has the cost. And I think that probably covers pretty much what we want to say at the outset. Just want to reaffirm, we all believe and are committed to having a maximum public process before any preconceived notions are working their way into our analysis.
The one town, I think, did you mention Concord?
I do.
So I think what we have been doing is we've put our heads down, we're about four weeks into the year, charge, four months into the year charge, and so we've had a chance in our getting the committee involved in the analysis of what is being built in Needham. And we have broken it into two chunks. The first chunk being what we call non-conforming lots, which are under ten thousand. And then we have a second group that's going out for the committee to survey, which is a second group of houses that are in conforming lots, which is ten thousand, up to, we're thinking somewhere around fifteen thousand, maybe a little bit bigger, just for some examples of what can be built in that range. And so we're trying to be as data-driven as we can for Needham, just to understand what has been built, what's the tendency that we're seeing in the sizes of houses on certain lot sizes. And then we are going to kind of compare and contrast, as Mo said, with other towns, so we can kind of see where we sit relative to other towns in terms of the size of lots and the size of houses, and what those entries show us. What we have been discussing a lot as a committee is to, and part of our charge that we received from the Planning Board via the citizens petition was to analyze what are the best ways to actually measure houses. And one of the things that we came to pretty early on is that what we feel is the main task is to find out the best way to measure what we call bulk. And bulk would basically mean what's above ground. And so there's this sense that what is the size of, the visible size of the house relative to the size of the lot, and that is the most obvious, I guess, feature or factor that we would, we're trying to analyze. And so as people may know who are listening, the current way that by law for the large houses works is that they are measuring, they're measuring only on FAR, floor area ratio. So this group has been looking at other ways that we might measure. That includes setbacks, includes height, includes lot coverage. And so you'll see. Small correction, lot coverage is a measure that's in our zoning. Yes. It's just the way the builders are building, they're not hitting it. The way that the number that it's set today, they're not getting there. They're going right up to the limit of a floor ratio, but they're not hitting lot coverage at all. Right, so I think one of the things that we will want to be testing is what are the most effective control measures and which ones end up becoming the most governing? And this, as Bill said, FAR is clearly what the houses are being built to, and they're underbuilding relative to the coverage, meaning the coverage limit is very generous.
Can I ask about that? So the twenty-five to thirty percent lot coverage for single residents being the thirty to thirty-five general residence lot coverage, what, when you max out the FAR, where do you end up?
So if you're maxing out the FAR, which virtually all of the non-conforming lots did, and in the next group, the conforming lots, there's less, like, they're not really bumping up against their maximum FAR. The coverage, when you see them hitting the threshold at FAR, the way the houses are being built, they're in the twenty to twenty-five percent, in a thirty percent limit. So they're well under by five or more percentage points in the coverage. The FAR is what they're maxing out.
Okay.
Can I just add something?
This was generated by a town meeting warrant article, which dealt with how we define FAR.
We're going to get to that next.
So we'll be discussing that, but how we define FAR is also part of the.
So I'll just go, I'll come back to FAR. So setbacks is a one, another tool we have. There are essentially two sizes of setbacks that Needham currently has on their conforming lots. It's fourteen feet, and on non-conforming lots, if you have a narrow frontage, it's twelve feet. And then, and so those are basically, no one has really thought that that was of any significant consequence, but we are certainly keeping it open for discussion. On the height limit, there was a lot of, in the first round of touring of houses and looking at houses, people were very conscious of height. And so we heard again and again and again that these houses look really tall, so what are we going to do about that? So I think one of the things we do have on the list of things to study is height limits, and whether or not we have a thirty-five limit now, and whether or not that gets reduced, and to what extent that causes issues for the building industry, for the design industry. We'll analyze that. So height is something that is of interest. Lot coverage, as we talked about, is currently, the limits set are rather generous, so we may be thinking that there's an opportunity here to reduce the coverage. And so we're going to look at all these different measuring tools and see how they kind of come together as we discuss all the different ways we can measure this. Now, on floor ratio, what Needham currently is doing is, next, sorry, and again. And again, thank you, floor ratio. So the FAR is currently measured in Needham on just the ground floor and the first floor. And that means that everything that's being built below in the basement or being built above, and whether it would be a third floor or an attic, are not counted by Needham. And so what we have been studying is all of the existing houses and the house drawings, and we actually have measured all the houses, and we know all the different square footages for all the houses that we've studied, both in the non-conforming and the conforming lots. And by doing that, we can now see exactly what's being built relative to what is being measured by the FAR. And so we are also looking at other towns and what their methods that other towns have for measuring their houses. And one of the things we think is probably important to do is to actually measure, and part of what was, part of the charge was to ask us to confirm what are the right ways to measure houses, and we think that it's probably going to be smart for us to include for a second and third floor. We are debating whether we want to include the garage or not include the garage. And the lower level, basement level, is something that is, we don't think is necessarily to be, to be calculated or carried, but there are measurements when basements, the trip, when a basement gets measured, if it's exposed beyond certain percentage. So I think we'll probably have some subtlety. You know, recommend that there's some ways that that might be carried if you have sloping sites, so there's some ways that that sometimes comes into play, so.
Which is related to bulk.
Yes, right, but again, right, reinforcing the idea here that we're not trying to measure things that we might not see, but we are trying to measure things that we are seeing. And so I think the fairness here is that there's an idea that we match up, we measure what we see. And so I think that's kind of where we're ending up. So basically, where we are right now is in a combination of analyzing what we're doing in Needham on two sets of houses, understanding through some surveys whether we feel there's some limits to where people feel they're getting too big, and that we're going to be comparing all of those ideas about the sizes of the history of houses in Needham with other towns. And then we will be, the most important thing really is, now that we're collecting this information, we really want to get together with the community and start to hear all the concerns that are in the community, and then start to have that help shape what we're going to go forward and do in terms of developing some ideas and some proposals that we would bring back to the planning board. So we do have a meeting schedule, and it's generally, we're saying, I will come back to Wellesley in a second. But the thing that's interesting about our meeting schedule is that we want to get going, and then we have a big break for the summer, when people are probably not going to be here, so we don't want to put the onus on people that have to be around. So we're going to do a meeting in June, and then we'll take the summer to do all of our data collection, and then come back together in September. And then we'll have two meetings in the fall to get together with the community and show where we are and get feedback, and then continue to refine that and bring to you in November, December, a report.
Was the hearing, we read up on your June second?
I think initiative, I think surface, and I think the school graduation, maybe continue that. So we're looking at.
It's a rain date for the high school graduation.
So we might want to move it to a week later, just so we're not.
Well, the real issue is that the Needham Channel is how we can do hybrid, and they're not available on June second because of that. So we're thinking of switching it to June ninth. I'm going to try to make sure the committee is available, and also checking with conflicts, but. Yeah, I think it's true, because it could be a rain date, and then we would have a problem. And also, just for total clarity, it's not technically a hearing. I think it's more of a community meeting. So once it's handed off to the planning board, then the planning board will take it on?
Then the planning board will take on the recommendation.
Recommendation, public hearings, to then bring it to the Maytown meeting?
That's what the goal would be, yes. I think the goal was to hand the planning board, you know, a proposal with zoning language that could start as a framework. And I think we looked at the schedule going forward for the planning board as well. Then we actually looked at a town meeting and at the annual special, and we feel that this schedule would work and would allow the planning board to actually hold the hearing, and actually hold two continuance, two continuations of that hearing in case that's required, so there would be enough time in the backend to meet the annual special.
Can I also say, at this point, we've had excellent, excellent staff support, and we really appreciate it. It makes the work a lot easier.
But you can tell then, so we can get more help.
Or we can tell them they've been really stressed out.
They're not watching this meeting.
They better be, but. Tell them all the great things they do and how hard they work on this season, and that we need some extra help, but we're going in the budget this year.
Well, I don't think any position was recommended in the budget. Although the town manager did say it was her number one priority, and she would have funded it if the money had been available.
I've been making the, I made the cases.
For what it's worth, our planning staff is smaller than most similar communities.
We made that. I have one quick question. I don't know, does anyone have any questions here, the group? Adam, any questions?
I'm just listening for now, thank you.
Okay, thank you. No, go ahead.
I just, and you may not have this ready, and I know you're kind of aggressive. With regards to fiscal impact analysis, can we talk a little more about how you plan to handle that process in terms of engaging with, you know, consultants and the data collection? I think in my orbit, stuff talking about this, you know, with the change in administration the last couple of months, tariffs and tax assessments, there's a lot more pressure on individuals who have their largest asset is their ability to sell their house. And, you know, if there was a, if we're capping the valuation or capping the ability to sell a house, reducing it by two hundred thousand dollars, that's significant. So that has to be in the calculus and in the process of the public, you know, then you'd be able to kind of talk about and all kind of come up with a solution. So can you talk, because that, to me, is the most important thing. We can all talk about the size of the box, you know what I mean? And do that, and maybe like, because it's really a definition of FAR, when it comes down to it, it's, we're different than what Wellesley does, and, you know, we may be, and that's what Joe Matthews was saying at his thing, you know, so really, just, it might just be a definition change and then kind of tweaking a couple of variables. But this fiscal impact analysis, I think, is probably the most important thing of this entire study.
That is on our list, and we can address that if you want to speak more to it. Yeah, I mean, it's an excellent point, and as part of this, if you make the box smaller, in theory, the buyer is going to be willing to pay less for that, which means the builder is going to sell out at a lower number, which means they can pay less for the house that they are going to knock down, right? So we are looking at those numbers in the different ranges of size of lot, and looking at what the, we're taking all the new construction homes, and we're looking backwards to see what they paid for the knockdown, and analyzing those numbers. And then, once we get to a new box, we'll say, what is, what do we think that would sell for? And therefore, what is that going to do to the price of the house that they're knocking down? And, you know, we'll be, we're definitely keeping that in mind, and it's going to be something we look at a lot. I don't know how a independent company would analyze the problem, but that's essentially where we're coming at, how we're coming at it. We're doing a lot of research about looking at the houses that have been built, and what happened with them, and then projecting what would happen if they, or what would have happened if they couldn't have built as big a home. And, you know, I think that we're, we haven't really talked too much about this, but to your point, we can't make a property that was worth a million now worth eight hundred. That's going to be a hard sell, right?
Definitely, yeah. And I think also the valuation or the assessment and how that means the town in terms of revenue. You know, and obviously, it's going to be assessed at last, what's that calculus look like in terms of estimated, you know, revenue from real estate valuations?
Well, we're also.
Well, assess value is really, that's not going to have a revenue impact on the town, right?
From the levy, but yes, we're talking to the board of assessors, and no, certainly, I think that's worth exploring, at least to see the community, the town impact, community impact, the town impact, and then the individual's home.
I think all of this will have to be weighed in conversation. I mean, it's definitely important data, but I think we've also heard a lot of people who are concerned that the houses are very big. So, you know, there's adjustments that happen in markets, and then they adjust and they move on. So I think how we do this is to get the data in front of everybody.
There's also, I mean, there's the final house size, what the builder then can build. Keeping in mind that so far, the builder doesn't want to spend as much as they were before, or maybe they will, he's now going to take, make a little less profit. But then there's also what they, then what the seller's selling for, the builder wants to spend, the profit he wants to make, but then there's, okay, well, maybe the builder won't buy it as easily as before, won't make as much profit, and now there's homeowners that come into town. Maybe they'll spend, maybe they will spend the same money, money that the builder was originally going to spend on the house, is they're not going to tear it down and make a big house. They're going to limit it and renovate it. So there's that aspect.
There's definitely a crossover between families and builders. So, you know, it probably wouldn't go from a million to, Artie's point, it wouldn't go from a million to eight. It would maybe go somewhere in the middle, and a family would pick a lot. I've had deals where at a million three, there were buyers and builders still duking it out. So, and that was on a small lot.
We looked at incentivizing people to make it easier to rehab or add on, or, you know, rather than knock down. I mean, that's, you know.
That's not something that we've looked at too much. There's a lot of, like, the energy codes are really a big problem there, yeah.
Yeah, that's the thing.
Certainly, I think there's something in town we can do to user relax, make it easier for people to add on.
It's not a part of our charge. Well, there are some changes, though, that are coming from the energy code, that are actually allowing you to build without having to bring to the same high standards. So you do an addition. Yeah, it's, you are going to be able to, so there's less of a pressure point, let's say, for you to have to go bring the house up to that level, that energy standard. So it's, there's some positive direction that.
Well, which is interesting is, you know, that, you're right, Bill, that specifically is not part of our charge, but what attempts is part of our charge. For example, someone wants to add on to the house, but, you know, do we have some flexibility for the FAR? And like, if they want to add on, in order for them to stay there, keep the house, not tear it down, they need to bump, they need to bump up a little higher than the FAR would normally be. Maybe that would never happen, I don't know. But they have some flexibility to be able to keep a house, not tear it down, has value to it, is that house has a lot of body carving.
Chair? And then Chair?
Yes.
I just want to caution, if we're setting rules, you know, for an existing house to be added on to, that would allow it to be larger than what the otherwise FAR would be for new construction, I don't know if that's a lawful, a lawful activity advantaging one group and disadvantaging another.
I'm not sure it's smart either. I mean, the, if you're going to make a house that's bigger than the FAR, then it's by its nature, we're violating what we set out to.
Exactly.
And a new house that's a smaller FAR is going to be a better house than an existing house that gets bolted on to with an addition. You know what I mean? It's not, you're not helping, like, we're trying to maintain, one objective might be, you might say, is to maintain some of our existing housing stock that could be seen as starter homes, right? And if you go build a massive addition that makes it bigger than the FAR rules.
And you're going to.
It's not, it's not a.
Well, we're probably crossing things that will never happen. One is that, you know, when someone wants to add on to the house, what are the rules that it triggers? And that's, that's the main thing versus something that would likely never happen, that is, someone wants to add on a house, which then bypasses the FAR, bypasses. go bypasses the FAR, bypasses the law coverage, that would perhaps never happen. But clearly what has happened is people wanted to put an additional house and that triggers the rules that sometimes makes it easier to tear the whole house down.
But it's, it's the, the fine line of mandating, right? To do it. I, I think the biggest, the way that I see it, the biggest thing is, is the cost of the property. Because if you build a smaller house, you use less materials, that, you know, you can still do the same percentage of profit on it. It's just, it's a smaller investment. It's the, the land that's really expensive. And that's, that's where, where you can gain if it's a little bit.
Madam Chair? I, I would just wanna caution us, the, the exercise, I think, is about is responding to the public concern about the size of the box and the lot. If we're talking about a different, if we're talking about a goal of, of causing the reduction in land values for single-family homes.
I don't think we're doing that.
Good. I just, I just wanna be clear because it almost sounded like, you know, this is a goal of affordable housing. And, and, and I'm, and I, I, I get it. Because, you know, the, just to be clear, you know, it's, it's compelling, but it's a different goal, like the, you know, in the last six months, you know, the average, uh, you know, the average home, new construction is about sixty-three hundred square feet, marketed as sixty-three hundred square feet. And selling for, uh, over three point one million, which is four hundred eighty-six dollars a square foot. So, uh, you know, it, I understand the desire to try and say, well, if we, you know, if we shrink the size from sixty-three hundred square feet to forty-three hundred square feet, we'll, we'll make these houses more affordable. I mean, yes, they're more affordable, but they're still, you know.
They're cheaper, but.
We weren't saying that at all. I, I think that the biggest issue, what I understand is that the houses are too big for the lots that they're being built on. But what, but I, what I was just bringing up is that the land is, the land, it's what it costs. And so, you know, then we were talking about, you know, million, one point two versus eight hundred, somewhere in the middle. So you're still gonna have the land cost as it is. So we weren't talking about creating affordable housing and we weren't talking about changing the value of the lot.
Thanks for clarifying. Uh, it's interesting, uh, you know, what Wellesley was doing. And, and some of the, uh, conclusions that they've, uh, observed after having changed their zoning bylaw to, and I, I don't know to what extent and how they reduced the floor area, uh, ratio and the size of the bulk on a lot. Uh, and to what extent that inadvertently or intentionally caused, um, a re, a substantial reduction in the number of new construction builds. I'd be curious if there is any, you know, discussion on that.
There's, there's, um, what we can tell you, we've, we've had preliminary meetings with the head of their planning board and we have, um, done some collecting of, of examples from their building department on what's been built on their equivalents of seven to ten thousand square foot lots up to fifteen thousand square foot lots. So, yes, they've had fewer applications for new construction during the course of the last ten years than we have. Um, they also have, um, a greater percentage that are going for additions, so that of the new construction versus additions, there's a, there's, they're skewed. It's slightly differently than we are. There are a lot more additions there than there are new constructions. Um, so I think what's interesting, and then again on the size, their control mechanism is a large, large house review. And so I think that the deterrent has shown itself to be effective. That there are a lot of people who will just take the bill to the limit on a ten thousand square foot lot, which is thirty-six hundred square feet. And then on a fifteen thousand square foot lot, it's forty-three hundred square feet. And then this is where we measure T lag, which is different from what we measure. They measure total livable area plus garage, T lag. And that means one, two, three, and garage are counted. And then if there's anything that's trips to twenty-five percent exposure, then it's counted in the basement. So, that tells you that the deterrents of a, of a large house review, which goes through design review board for architectural, um, comments, design comments, goes to planning board for anything that's conforming. If it's non-conforming, it goes through their ZBA. So there's a split of houses that go through planning board versus ZBA for larger homes than what would be the limit. So what's interesting there is that Wellesley feels like they've put a system in place that's actually successfully deterring people from knocking the house down and building a new house. So lots of additions going up. There are lots of houses that are being built, new built that are under those, the lots.
Said they can be as a bright.
So they're as a bright.
And they go in.
Their as a bright is, is smaller than our as a bright would be though, right?
Their as a bright is, is set lower than what we are, yes.
And then they correct for that by allowing a large house review, but they have twice the number of staff in their planning department and half the number of bills. So if we tried to do a large house review, it would be owners from a.
Yeah, we'd have to discuss as a town whether that's a process that we'd wanna start thinking about because it's got its merits, but it's. But that's, that's the part of the deterrence, you know, it's a, it's a, you know, nine months to a year to go through those various meetings.
The interesting thing is when you do open yourself up to a large house review, they start looking at everything.
Right.
Yeah, but they look at light, light and you're, around your property. They look at, uh, tree removal. They look at all sorts of stuff that they wouldn't normally be looking at in the buy right model.
Bill, is that because, is that because instead of a buy right condition, it becomes a special permit condition?
Effectively, right?
But even for the buy right, they have a tree survey that's required. So you still have more there required for just a buy right condition.
And, um, clarify on the special permit, uh, it is not a special permit in Wellesley. It's a site plan review process.
It's a site plan review.
Similar tool we have as a special permit, but it's a site plan review.
What I think is interesting with the Wellesley is that what they, when you go to a large house review, a lot of things they do are a lot of things that people are in some ways asking for here. I mean, people have lighting from the, lighting from the neighbors that are blaring into their property, trees being wiped out. Lots being barren. I mean, since again, to some degree, a lot of what they're doing in Wellesley, because that is putting in place some things which makes sense anyway. Not saying we're gonna do that, but it makes sense. The fact we have no light, we have no lighting by law for residents of properties at all. And there's some, there's some lighting on some of the properties that are really glaringly flagrant as far as what any neighbor should do to another neighbor. But in Wellesley, they, they, you have to have a, you have to have, you know, the luminance, the, the light survey, where it is, and prove that it's not going to impinge trespass on your neighbor's, your neighbor's property, your neighbor's house.
I think just to make sure that if people heard what Mo said, the, the, when you do go through a large house review, whether it's designer view or planning board over there or ZBA, they do involve the, the, the neighbors immediately. So, um, there is a as you said, I think there's, there's an opportunity for people to, to hear what's going on and then to have a, a say in.
Do they have design review in addition to large house?
Designer review goes, does, goes first. And so they look at the design and they sit down with the planning, the, the company or the, the homeowner, the designer, um, and then they go through a series of comments and those are usually massaged and brought back as another round. And then once that's gone through, that's a report that goes to planning board or ZBA. And that's the first starts the process.
That can also be triggered by, uh, an addition as well. It's not just, it's not just, you cross the criteria with an addition.
And the perception of their, their perception, the planning board and Wellesley's perception of design review is that's value added to the developer. Because the developing community in Wellesley indicates they get a better product when they have that review.
The developers then?
Whether it's objective reality or not, I don't know.
Well, what's interesting is that if someone is going to the large house review, uh, one of the, one of the, let's say, criteria, one of the things that they take into account was how does it fit into the existing neighborhood? And so, and then so designer view, I suppose perhaps that's what they're looking at. Again, how is it fitting, fitting into existing? So if, if the neighborhood is, is already flipped, well, that's, that's, at some point becomes the existing.
It's still advisory.
Yeah.
Yeah. And they, 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 the people that are on these large house review committees have seen a number of processes progress, right? So they, they sat there while neighbors came and talked about things about the design of a particular property. So they're starting, it sounds like they're starting to build a little bit of a understanding for what to look for in a design where they can say to the developer, you know, you might wanna like put in a gable there or something to, you know, but they make suggestions on the design that they think will help the developer in terms of having the neighbors look at it favorably.
As an architect, designed by committee is not a good thing. I'm just telling you, we hate that. Because you, you're not looking at it realistically. You're looking at one part of the building and, and you're not looking at the whole piece.
I think they, I think they are doing.
They're looking, sorry, I'm just telling you.
They're not gonna do, yeah, they're not gonna do, they're not doing a front this time. They're making recommendations and those are not, they're making.
Plus, it's only if they go to the large house review.
Right, right.
Has there, has, and there, there obviously Wellesley's gonna say, yeah, it's great. But, um, now before they implemented this, then what was the timeline for, you know, a standard approval for, you know, a house? Was it, did they have a level of control before, other than standard, just standard zoning, meaning this is a nine month to a year process to get a house flipped, which in some ways, it, it, it pulls the lever down. So it's not eighty a year, what, all, all the stuff that's gonna, the, and that may be an unintended effectiveness, but are they feeling that that administrative burden of nine months to a year, what is it from a, from a developer perspective? And their experience, but just, has, has this been looked at?
I think what has happened there is they've noticed that a lot of houses, a lot of developers, and it's not just developers, and it's the same with this town. A lot of those are being built by homeowners as well. It's just an important characterization. They're choosing not to go through the T light process. They're just staying under the limit, which is just a straightforward process. Process takes potentially up to a year.
It's an effective deterrent.
They just, now again, Wellesley has high property values. So the property that they are building within those criteria is still a very valuable. It's still a very valuable property. So the developers seem to be choosing, we go, we put, we go to the limit, but we're not gonna cross it. So we're not triggering that one year and we're just in the standard process.
There's also a lot of value in a neighborhood to houses that aren't massively oversized and well, neighborhood is valued there for the people that are living there.
Well, one of the issues there, I think, is not, not, but they started this in twenty fourteen, I think, was it?
Seven.
Or twenty, yeah, and.
Seven, ten.
They set their dimensional criteria back that time.
Reacting to.
The horse is out of the barn in need of, now you're not going from the sixty-three hundred square foot average back to what their criteria is now without having a massive impact on, on lot values with that. So the criteria, the, the dimensional criteria would be, would be a big hit to, to need them. The process, I think, is something that we're kinda interested in, in more so than the actual criteria, but it's it's process rather than the actual specifics of the dimensionals requirements there.
Right.
I had a developer talk to me and tell me a project he was doing in Wellesley where he was just talking about, they had him add all these trees. Basically, he was taking a property, splitting a couple, putting up a couple of large homes and he was saying they really asked him to put a lot of trees. So I visited the property and said to him, you know, blah, 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 those are gorgeous. They're actually gorgeous. They've been there for a little while now, but they're actually gorgeous, what he did with the, what he did with the houses and the landscaping around it is.
There's no question that they have a different level of, of final product because they have more things that they are watching. And, and asking for, for the, the design process. We don't have any of that. We have nothing on light, we have nothing on trees. We have nothing on, so there's, so, you know, hence you see a lot of greater transformation.
And all that landscape and trees have, has a great reduction in flooding for all the neighbors around it. Great reduction.
Go ahead, Adam.
Well, there is, I do believe that there is a relationship between trees and, and some stormwater. Um, uh, drainage or absorption. But I was just in Toronto and, you know, in midtown Toronto, there are thousands and thousands of homes that are, that have, my sister's house had a width of, I think, sixteen feet, maybe eighteen feet. I think I'm wrong. I think it was eighteen feet and a lot was probably twenty feet. And in many cases, those homes are like they're, uh, they're attached, um, they're not townhouses, but they're attached, single families. And, uh, and in some cases, you know, homes had trees in the front and had home, and had some trees in the back. But some of those trees actually rooted in to the piping system on the street. And so they had to be, so they had to be removed because they were infiltrating the actual house. And those homes have been flooded. When they removed home, when they removed trees, uh, either to build something new or when they, um, or when they removed trees from an existing house that just, that stayed. And there are lots of homes that have one tree or just a couple of trees. There are many homes that have, you know, more trees than that. But even in the large house construction areas of, of Toronto, you know, there the stormwater management has not been as significant of an issue. And that was known by the absence of trees. So I know that there is a correlation. I just don't know scientifically. Or if any of us know that, you know, what precisely the relationship is, but I know that it is a valid concern.
I don't think it's just about stormwater either. I think there's value, you know, visually, canopy, you know. There's a lot, there are lots of other values.
There's a whole tree.
There is another committee looking at trees.
Right, so we're not, I don't wanna derail. This is the large house. So next steps in that are, are for, for June, you're gonna have some community meetings. So that by the end of the year, we can, um, you'll have recommendations.
And there's a lot of. That's our goal.
Yes, yeah. And one way or another, we'll fly the way.
A lot of it depends on how well the public response of our calls, please participate. It's essential that people who are aware of this issue and care about it, if they have an opinion, they really need to either come or they can write to this committee through the planning board. And we'll look at anything that anybody tells us. That's information that helps us.
I think making sure, we did a lot of PR on, on the MBT communities, having a lot of outreach. And there were, I, I don't know what the, what the budget is for PR for this, but I think we, we got the word out and still, and we did the postcards and still people said they didn't know about it. Um, and so I just, I just wanted to say that this is, there's gonna be a lot of discussion about it, figuring out how to get the best PR and the best, um, you know, just marketing of what you're doing is, is critical.
We're, we're aware of the data. Do what you're saying.
And, and, and our meetings are gonna be completely Q and A going on.
I know, but if you don't get the people, it's, it's the people that show up at town meetings and say they've never heard of this initiative.
I get it, absolutely.
Right, even though. Even though, even though they received a postcard and it's everywhere, you know, everywhere that we can think of, but.
In the end, we have to be true to a public process and then we will always experience some people who don't avail themselves of it.
So, thank you for, I mean, just. I wanted to acknowledge that.
Thank you for saying that. Thank you for all.
Thank you.
And thanks, Artie, for.
Mo and I doing it together. Well, actually, the gospel and all the working group. We are, we are.
What Artie's saying is that he's minimal.
Because this is one big, this is one big group doing it. We're all pitching in.
And Jean, we're so happy to see you again.
Yes, well, I'm on the committee, but I must say, the working group has really been doing the bulk of the work that it was doing here tonight. They've been
I think that's great. And I'm, I'm not on the working group. Thank you, thank you all. Okay.
Good to see Eric. First planning board meeting, right?
Okay, so the third item is zoning article assignments for the annual special town meeting and further board discussions on warrant articles. So, um,
So I know, I think, um, we, we plan to have you present, I think, the base plan, the compliance plan, provided it comes out the first night of town meeting, I think.
How do we end up eighteen and nineteen? Why weren't we earlier, you know?
Um, that's just what the way they signed the warrant, I mean, it's just they did what, in terms of what they customarily put forward. Um, I think, I mean, I think a lot of the earlier stuff will go through a consent calendar, but I can't guarantee it.
Yeah.
Um, I I can't guarantee, you know, I can't guarantee, so it's possible that it could be heard on Wednesday or it could be heard on Monday.
Yeah, and so, yeah, so I put email out, like, I would like if it's being heard on Wednesday, you said you.
I'm out of town.
You're out of town.
Right.
You're out of town.
I got my daughter from college, so the question is, I mean, for most of the town meetings that I've been to, but I I can't. Usually they they do, the budget is what really gets a lot of discussion.
Right.
Before the break and so.
I'm hoping they'll get to the budget, but it also probably really depends on how much goes to on the consent calendar.
Right, right. Okay.
Um, so I guess yours later to do it.
So I'm I'm available to do it and I'm available, yeah, but then on Wednesday is the day that I have a, I have a conflict.
But but if you have a script, for example, I mean, I think we have a script.
We have a PowerPoint presentation.
Yeah, we have, plus we have script, right, essentially.
Well, the PowerPoint, the PowerPoint presentation is a script because you just basically.
Yeah.
Read it, I mean, everybody knows about it anyway, but I will, um, I can go through it.
We can, we can, I think, I mean, I think we're probably just taking the presentation we did for the public meeting and using that.
Yeah.
And we did, and we did this presentation once before, right?
Right.
We can, you can even like just Google it.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
Um, but I think, I'm hoping that it will happen and anyway, beyond it, everybody knows what it is, it's not something new. Um, there's really very little any new information.
And Katie, I think, updated the capital memo, she updated the, uh, grant memo, because of grant impacts and the school impact. Um, memo, so we have that available, that will be on the town's website.
Right.
Um, and so the other article is really, um, the flip lane article, which will be the special, which is money, which is the following money. So, um, I guess Justin.
Yeah.
Just saying.
Yeah, Justin.
Do that one.
I can work, I can work if you want a script on that.
Yeah, we can work on a PowerPoint on that.
Um, and then, anything else?
And then I think you have the warrant, I I think Alex included in the agenda packet, your, the warrant article assignments. For the lead. You mean the lead rooms? Yeah, the lead rooms.
And what day is that again, just to confirm?
The twenty eighth.
Adam, making sure you have that on your calendar too, right?
So Eric, if you'd like, I can ten to one with you.
And it's at the center of the height.
Yes.
Yay.
Sure. Natasha?
Yes, it's your first time.
What, what were you saying was on my calendar, like, cut out?
The the twenty eighth, just in case you didn't hear, the twenty eighth from, you should have it, because I see you here, seven thirty to nine thirty. At the League of Women Voters Warrant Meetings at the Center at the Heights.
Yes, yeah, I have that.
And then we have the, when we get there, we will, you know, go into the different rooms.
Yeah, so I, so I take the precinct I and J and whatever.
Right, and so Alex sent that information.
Yeah, we have it.
Just, okay.
Yeah, I think I was doing C and D, I think.
Yeah, yeah, so we we put you with Lee so that you.
Yeah, I, because I'll be attending six thirty to seven, seven thirty, the new orientation for town meeting members.
Oh, lucky you.
Yeah. You're getting initiated in every way.
Every way.
And Michael P will teach you. How it works.
Exactly.
Yeah, that's great.
And I'll schedule a meeting before town meeting, like we customarily do. Great.
Okay, and then the next one, the, and the next, um, item is meeting minutes from March eighteenth, twenty twenty five. Um, are there any questions on those meeting minutes?
No, Madam Chair, I move, um, acceptance of the minutes as written for the March eighteen meeting.
Seconded.
Okay, so Adam made the motion and Justin seconded, um, any questions? So all in favor, so we can't, so let's do one at a time, um, Adam Block.
Hi.
Justin?
Hi.
Can I vote on?
No, you can't vote.
You can't, yeah.
Bye.
Artie is I and I, the chair, so, um, they're approved, thank you for that. Um, summer schedule, Alex, did you wanna? Um, well, now that we do have all of our members, we're gonna have over the summer. Um, and also since, um, our next meeting is until May twentieth. It would probably be good for us to think about when we wanna meet over July and August. Um, I don't have any dates to propose.
One thing I would like to ask, if we have, you know, a lot, we've had some possibilities for live house review meetings. I I would, it would be nice if the, if our Monday, that's Monday, and it would be nice if we had a Tuesday meeting that they were the same week. That would be nice.
Uh, well, I'll tell folks when that would be. Um, that would be July eighth and twenty second.
Twenty second.
Um.
That's my birthday.
Okay, which one?
Twenty second.
July, what is it?
Twenty second.
July.
The eighth, okay, so maybe July twenty second is an option and in August, um.
The fifth and nineteenth.
Yeah, but the nineteenth, I'm out of town, so.
I was gonna say, I prefer not the fifteenth, I might be completely out of town.
Can you say the dates again? Well, the dates of the large house committee meeting, the date of the large house committee. Week is August fifth and the nineteenth.
This, this, as far as my asking for coupling them together, this is, it's more, it's more important in this case that I'd rather push out the fifth to the twelfth. And in that particular case, people won't mind that one.
Well, maybe what we're zeroing in on. Is possibly July eighth and possibly August twelve. So what do folks feel about those?
Make it happen.
I'm okay, right?
I, I may not be present, I guess, on the eighth, depending on where I am, uh. I may take the day off in the summer and do something fun, um. Um.
Oh, sorry, the last one that was your birthday?
Yeah, July the eighth, yeah.
Okay, I'm, I think I've. I did that wrong.
I think it was the twenty second.
The twenty second, sorry, Adam.
But mine's okay, but like my, my wife and I haven't come up with our summer schedule yet.
I don't think a lot of people have, yeah.
So, do we, do we have a sense, Alex and Lee, of what projects are gonna come between now and then that would require meetings in July and August?
No, can't think.
No, but if this passes, then we might be getting some. Some projects for review for Muzzy, maybe for.
Well, Muzzy, Muzzy would.
You're not gonna.
Yeah, it's.
Res zoning, but what about?
It's possible we'll get some MBTA community act filings, you know, I don't know, we don't have anything, no one's coming.
We can predict anything yet, yeah.
Really can't.
I think we just set some dates right now, we might.
We, I, yeah, I think we need to set, I mean, we could talk again before town meeting, if people think in the next two weeks they might have a better sense, but waiting until. Middle to end of May when we next formally meet seems like a little, people are gonna, people are gonna be asking me, so the twenty second. We're gonna need to know how to schedule it.
Twenty second, July twenty second seems okay, Adam, would that work for you?
July what?
Twenty second.
Yeah, I just don't know.
Yeah, I think we all feel the same way, but at least there's not major conflict like a birthday or a holiday or.
Right.
Well, right now, let's say, just say July twenty second and then, um.
Is it August twelfth, is it, or?
Yeah, August twelfth.
August twelfth.
I mean, at this point, it's open.
Let's just do it for now and then, as we.
Absolutely.
If and when anybody discovers that they have a conflict, just tell me, okay, and we'll take it from there. Okay, that sounds good, and then, um, so that's summer schedule, report from planning board and board members. Um, do you wanna talk about the? The Stephen Palmer?
Oh, Stephen Palmer, we, um, we're hoping, we have a RFP out on the street to hire a consultant to work with the committee that's gonna be looking at the reuse of, at that property. Um, we had to continue the, um, the timeline for people to submit proposals because we couldn't get anything. Um, and so we have a new deadline of this week, and we're hopeful somebody will, uh, qualified will find it, it's, it's a problem, so it might delay the beginning of the work.
So, okay, do we know who is in the committee already? Because we didn't even know who was on the committee.
I don't have a list, I'll get a list of who this left board appointed. Their side and who's been appointed from the other parties, I'll, 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 I'll get an update on that.
Okay. Um, and then the correspondence, do you need any other? Where? Well, are you on report?
Yeah.
I would like a report, are you on Envision Needham?
Yeah.
I have been seeing a lot, I would just be curious to know sort of. Where you guys are with it, just 'cause I'm seeing a lot about it.
Think about what I'm gonna say, um.
Okay.
But there, yes, I've been obviously, uh, on, on, on Facebook, it's there, um. There, like a lot of things. That Needham has done. Communications is not necessarily the strongest point of any project, MBTA, like there's, there's a lot of things that didn't, didn't go in terms of engaging, there were a lot of people who came to the table late. Um, whether they came to the table late because they didn't get a message or they didn't care when the message came out, there's, it's a lot of compounds there. Um, there were three slots on Envision for landlord, um, a, 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 um, builder, a landlord, a business owner. Uh, and one other business related, um, role. And one of them was temporarily filled in the very beginning of the project and then they left. Um, so there, there, just like with a lot of things, there are some, some folks that have been engaged by some. Um, by some folks, let's just say, um, developers and, uh, uh, uh. Uh, business folks that have, um, galvanized the business community to, um, object. Uh, to the pilot program because of perceived implications and effects on their business. There are a lot of businesses in town that are deeply affected due to tariffs and due to the, uh, assessment debacle. Um, where we, there are commercial assessments that skyrocketed, so, you know, at triple net, there, you're talking thousands of dollars in increase in rent. Um, that any perceived change of traffic and or parking, interestingly enough, one of the two designs actually has a net add of five parking spots. But anyway, no one's talking about that, um, they all think it's being taken away, um, but. The, any, any piloting program, unfortunately, the messaging isn't being done, right? So when you say you're going from two lanes to one lane, it equates to someone who's not a traffic engineer as that's a fifty percent reduction in volume. When in reality, that's not true, because when you have signal optimization, when you have, um, when you have turning lanes optimized, you could actually increase their throughput. From, from, you know, so, so, but unfortunately, because we're not in front of the messaging and this was, this is.
Justin, clear question?
Yeah.
He's, he's, he's really curious about this one, he's not reducing, unfortunately, where are the turning lanes, if there's only one lane.
So, so, so the entire stretch is, is actually changes. So there, there are, there are opportunities where there are, um, turning lanes, because it's not just two lanes throughout the entire from.
So, so approaching some of the lights.
Correct, right, you're, you're, yes, and it hasn't decided whether it's gonna be a left turn only, like we're changing the, the, the hospital, one in front of the hospital. That, that, that straight or left, that's gonna go just to left hand only and the, and the lane that's right now taking a right on Oak Street will change to straight. Or right, and so because that's, that, because that, that, that traffic light is off, but there are changes to routes and if, and if you actually go to the Envision meeting, the last one on tape. Where they did the two, um, things, you'll, you'll see, it's not just two travel lanes, that's, that's, unfortunately, that was a really old rendering. Here we're back to renderings on Facebook that are not necessarily accurate to what is really truly gonna happen. So, yes, I completely acknowledge. We, we need to, we need to go back and do a better job as a town, as a committee, to listen to and engage with the businesses for their concerns. And then we need to say, this is what we're then proposing, this is, this is how to, this is how we believe that it's not going to impact. You, you to this extent that you're gonna, that you're feeling it, some of that's through education and some of it's not. And then make a decision as a community for whether we go forward with a, a pilot and then after the pilot, then we need to figure out ten to twenty million dollars. Um, you know, but that's, that's also grants and stuff like that, but, and here's the other thing too, a lot of people are like, why the fuck are we doing bike lanes? Sorry, um, and in reality, in order to get funding, unless we wanna bootstrap this out of the levy. We have to look at external funding and external funding requires multimodal, um, design elements, so if we.
Does it, does it require it on both sides of the boat?
It just says a multimodal and, and it's not, and, and we have two different, just like the MBTA community exact, there was, there was, there were two different plans. Both of those plans, they're different in terms of the bike lanes, so one of the things that's really nice is the bike lane actually has a three foot, um, uh, between the parked, uh, parked cars and the lane itself, so you're not gonna door of a bike. And an ar, an argument can be made that in all the areas of Needham. Bike lanes are probably the best in the center because you don't want kids or people riding on sidewalks. And you don't wanna have cyclists doored by, you know, cars that are, you know, opening up, and so. You know, there, that, that's an argument could be made, I'm not saying that's.
Yeah, I, I mean, obviously, people say, how are they getting in the first place when there are bike lanes on the other places? There's no, there's no question when there's a lot of cars parked, I mean, when I'm riding my bike, I always ride looking who's in the car, when in the car, who's coming out in the streets. Always ride defensively, so absolutely, but certainly there are people talking about bike lanes and either side, how it's that shrinking it back and the trees in front of their, the trees in front of their signs.
Yeah, and so, but, but some of the, both designs have larger sidewalks, larger sidewalks mean more, uh, fresco dining.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
You know, you can put chairs outside.
Oh, it's a lot of benefits, a lot, a lot of benefits to that, but, you know, clearly, they're really, they're really have issues with, we don't, you know, they don't have ten years for things to turn around with people understand how to use that.
Hundred, hundred percent, so, I mean, I think that there were some pitfalls, although they tried to, they tried to engage, unfortunately, it just, a person like left because of.
Yeah.
You know, not enough, and there wasn't, no, they put it out in the community, there's no one applying for the position, that's not like we had, had, we have all these business owners that were not putting on the committee. No one is actually wanting to join, and I believe no one has even offered to join since this came up a week, a week.
Well, I was, I was at, I was at the meeting, uh, over there.
Kevin Keen.
We are with forty, forty people and he was asking, we need someone and no, someone said, well, maybe, but no one's stopping, yeah.
No one's.
No one's stopping, yeah, and I, and I get it.
You know, and.
Totally get frustrated.
But yes, these business, these business owners, some of them are, 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 are operating at razor thin margins right now, more so than they were, less so than they were before. All these tariffs and rents increase and all that, but, so people, they're scared, I get it, I completely get, but, and we're not just. Railroading something down, we're trying to not have a, the way that it came out.
And just, so what are the next steps? There is a pilot and it is in July?
So we have not nexus that last time that, um, we talked about the two things, yes, the pilot. Allegedly is still going on, but we haven't met as a committee yet, so they say, now that we have some, you know, genuine concern from the business community, do we pause? Do we, you know, do, do, what do we do? But we've also have this money that was granted to us that already has been engaged to the consultant, so if we pause, that's, that's potentially a loss of, of some of that money to the consultant, because we've already created them partially for a job. Um, so there's a lot of definition of pause, it could be.
Get more feedback and see what else we have to do, which isn't necessarily a pause.
Sure, but it could prolong the project, which would require more money, just because of, yeah, so there, there are some nuances involved in that, so we have not met as a, I think the next Envision meeting is.
Well, thank you for all the work you've been doing on this.
And then, yeah, so, yeah, that's a.
And, and I need, and I need.
Sorry to put you on the spot.
No, no, that's right, I knew it was gonna come up.
Curious, yeah, under report, I'm like, hey.
And, and I need, and I need to say, I'm tentatively on the committee also, but I haven't been able to make a lot of meetings.
No, and that, no, that's fine, and so, we're, we're double covered, because you're actually the planning board rep for it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But, and I'm, uh, transferring to the traffic safety committee rep, but it's still the same, I have no problem doing that.
But I do remember early on, I mean, you, you heard Justin, that was three months ago, and I said, we need to have public meetings, where are the public meetings?
Oh, yeah.
Then, then the comment was, we're, we're having the tours and then we'll do, then meetings will come later on, we have, there hasn't been any.
And there has.
Really, really, no, no, there's been some Zoom stuff, there hasn't been any.
No, 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 they had, so Thursday?
They haven't, they haven't gone to the business, they haven't gone to the businesses, and then gone to the businesses and said, we need to have a public meeting with you. So there hasn't been that going on, until, until the stuff hit the fan, that hasn't been going on.
But again, if there are public meetings and people don't know about them, we're having an issue with communication, we can't be targeting every single person.
But the businesses, the most important ones that should be targeted right now.
Right, so the communication of meetings in town, and maybe there's so many of them, but people just zone out, but we need to.
So that's, whether that, um, how long that pause is or whatever, we, we don't know. Um, but certainly it will be discussed and it's now come up on our radar, so.
Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Thanks. So I think that's all we have, is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Move to adjourn.
You're late, you're late.
So Artie, we already did it, Artie and, um, and Justin, um.
Light doesn't, light doesn't crown like that. Light doesn't, light doesn't crown like fast, yeah.
All in favor, Adam?
Aye.
Justin.
Aye. This I can vote for, aye. You can vote aye.
And Artie and myself, so thank you very much, our meeting is adjourned, you guys attend meetings.
See you at town meeting.